Commuted, committed. Very committed to not only our community, but also to our police department. It's great to have them back. We also have been working closely with our neighborhood policing division regarding the, uh, some of our homeless issues that we have in the division. Of course, we have some of those issues right, right here in, in Mira Mesa. Christina works with them on a weekly basis. I talk with Captain Takuguchi on a weekly basis regarding the challenges that we have. And I have been personally happy with the support they've given the division. And again, if, if we have, or we're missing stuff out there as far as addressing issues out there, we want to hear from the community. As far as that goes. And with that, that kind of wraps it up for me. Barry, I could take some questions or however you want to, uh, to, to do that. So just let me know.
Well, let's go ahead and put it up into the audience here, see who might have some questions for you. Everybody might be on mute. So if you're trying to speak, make sure you're on mute.
I have a question.
Hi, Joe.
Uh, yes, and, um, Captain, don't take this the wrong way. But we consider Penasquitas a micro-community. And we want Northeastern Division to be brought over to Mira Mesa, which is the biggest community in San Diego.
Well, if, if that happens, sir, then it would extend my commute. Right now it's 1.6 miles. I, I don't know if I could bear another mile or two.
We have great bike lanes.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Hi, thanks, Joe. Anyone else?
Um, so, um, I'll, I'll have one. Just sort of how the, how the police are handling the homeless issues these days.
Well, um, we, we are, uh, working, uh, with our neighborhood policing division who has, uh, developed an expertise with working with our homeless, um, uh, folks here in our communities. Right now, our focus is providing resources. Obviously, we have, um, a, a lot of folks who are living on our streets that are struggling with dependency issues, um, as well as, uh, potentially, uh, mental health issues. These are services that our neighborhood policing division is, um, got, uh, become very good at offering. And a lot of times you have to be pretty persistent in offering those type of, um, those services. Uh, a lot of times more than once, twice, three times. Uh, what we want to do is, uh, get these community members, um, off the streets into housing and get to the appropriate, um, services that they need. Um, obviously, if we have, um, folks who, um, have to be homeless or committing crimes, we are going to address those, um, like we would any other community member who's committing crime. So, they will be arrested, uh, in criminal cases will be sent down to the city or district attorney's office for review.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to jump in and say that over the past couple of months, we've really stepped up our conversations with, with Northeastern, the homeless outreach team in response to a growing number of reports from the community of, uh, new encampments, issues with certain individuals over by the pedestrian bridge. And I can't tell you how great the response has been from Northeastern, from the homeless outreach team, uh, neighborhood policing. They have worked so hard to try and reach these individuals. Uh, homeless outreach team did a pop-up behind the senior center, offering resources, COVID shots, uh, something you might not think of vouchers to get an ID because there are a lot of services they cannot access without an ID and without funds to purchase the driver's license, present the proper documentation. It's a little difficult to get that ID that will then let them access more services. And the response has been fantastic. The problems we were having with a particular individual over at the pedestrian bridge seem to have abated. The encampments are being managed. Those that are out in practically in the public right-of-way are moving along and hopefully a larger number of those individuals are seeking assistance. I know a lot is being offered. And I just want everyone to know that you may see these individuals out there because we have had a huge uptick during COVID and the number of individuals who are on the street. But every single day, uh, neighborhood policing homeless outreach team, they are in Mira Mesa. And if you have someone, you have an encampment, you've seen an individual who may have issues, the fastest thing to do if it's not an emergency, if it's just you see this individual, you see an encampment, is to report it on the Get It Done app. There, the access to those reports has been stepped up. They're going very quickly to the police department, to homeless outreach team, and they're being managed. If there is an issue, like with this individual we had at the pedestrian bridge where there's public disturbance, violence, et cetera. We had a conversation about that today with the maintenance assessment district where their cleaning crew had issues with being assaulted. Those are 911 calls. And let me know, Captain, if I left anything out there or stated anything incorrectly.
Uh, no, that was great, Barry. I'd also like to add that recently, uh, Councilmember Kate's offices had, had asked us for Caltrans, monitored properties, um, that have, uh, potentially homeless challenges, issues with them. And we were able to, to email them a list, um, I think about three weeks ago, so they could, uh, communicate those concerns with Caltrans. So I would like to, to thank Councilmember Kate's office for working with us to get that information out to our state agencies as well.
Absolutely. And Sheldon had reached out to me. For those who have seen it, the encampments behind Best Buy are on Caltrans properties since that is a shared area for Park and Ride. And some of the encampments over by the 15 around, uh, the apartment complexes also may be falling into Caltrans property. Any other questions? I think that's it for now. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Sorry, I actually, um, I'm sorry. Um, so, um, I'm curious about like what's happening at the, uh, at the epicenter. Um, yeah, when I was reading about the meeting, I heard about like nonprofits. And I'm just like, it's, it's been close for a long, I'm just like wondering, um, what's like, what's next for it?
Okay, the epicenter, I know for San Diego Police Department, the, um, the RSVP office is there for the building itself. Um, I invite you to stay on for the county supervisor's presentation because there's a lot going on with that building and it's related to the county.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. So you said to, if I would stay on here and that it's gonna?
Yeah, the county supervisor will be here between 7:45 and 8:00. She's coming from a redistricting present, presentation tonight. And she is, um, very familiar with the status of the arrangements. The epicenter is a city building and it does house the RSVP office. But the county will be operating the building in the future if all goes as planned. So the county supervisor can address any questions that you have about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So any other questions? And Captain, I think you've answered everything for now. I know Officer Santos is also going to step in with some information for us. I truly appreciate you being here and it was very nice to meet you at the meeting two weeks ago at Northeastern.
Yes, thank you for being there. Um, I appreciate your input in that during that meeting. And, um, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the capable hands of Christine. So, uh, thank you very much and everyone have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. How are you guys all doing tonight? All right. So I also want to send out my condolences, um, about Ted. Wonderful man. When I took over for Officer Oliveras, I had some big shoes to fill. I was super nervous. He welcomed me in. You guys were all great to me. So I'm truly gonna miss Ted. Um, as far as the homeless outreach, please, 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 like Barry had mentioned, uh, fill out those get it done's. I know I get a lot of calls. I get a lot of emails. They're concerned that I don't receive them. I am receiving them. Um, they do go out to our neighborhood police team first, um, goes out to our hot team, which is the homeless outreach team. And they come in and do the education part and file, um, any resources like the captain had mentioned. And then it goes to neighborhood policing and I work closely with the neighborhood policing, um, part to go out there for enforcement. And I'm happy to hear about the bridge. I know that was a big concern and, uh, the park and ride behind Best Buy. So any other concerns, please reach out to me. So I can email them. I could give them a call and we could work on that. Um, I know that Montango keeps coming up also and we're working with that. So please, please reach out to me. Um, as far as RSVPs returning, uh, holidays are coming up. So I know that hopefully we can start traveling again soon. Um, don't forget that our team does do the vacation house checks. So if you would like to do that, um, you go up on the city of San Diego website. You could fill out a form for the vacation house checks and our RSVPs would be more than happy to go out there and check those for you. And then I also wanted to mention the neighborhood police, uh, the, not the neighborhood police, but the, uh, neighborhood watch. I know that we mentioned that a couple of months ago and I have had a couple of citizens that reached out to me, um, asking me questions about it. And I know that a lot of people are still scared to be the captain and I promise you, it's not as scary as you all think it is. Um, so if you have any questions regarding the program, again, it's a great time, especially during the holidays with everyone traveling, to reach out to me and we could go over that and discuss that and we can help each other out as neighbors. Do you have any questions for me? Don't want to take up too much time.
This is good. And I do have some names of individuals who emailed me. We can compare lists next week and see, you know, where the overlap is and start getting them involved.
Oh, sounds great. Thank you. I'm so happy at work this time, too. All right. Thank you, everyone. I'll stay on.
You, excellent. All right, uh, San Diego Fire Department, is Captain Joe Ramondo here? Okay, Captain Ramondo. All right, that's possible. They are out on a call, so we'll move on. Uh, next up, President's Report and Approval of the Minutes. Let's do the approval first. The October minutes have been out on the website. If no one has changes or corrections, we will go ahead and accept the minutes as posted. Please let me know if you have any changes, corrections, additions. All right, hearing nothing, we'll go ahead and mark those minutes as approved. As far as the President's Report, um, we have several things. Of course, we've just talked about the homeless issue. We've talked about Ted. We have, um, the election, which everyone who was a paid member as of last month received a ballot in their email. We'll have those results a little later on. Then I think I'm going to keep it short since we have two very important presentations tonight. And we'll move on. Um, let's see, is Brian Grueters here with us?
Patty.
Hi, I'm going to go ahead and do your introduction. Um, okay, as the city of San Diego evolves its processes for assisting the homeless, you may have heard of the organization PATH. PATH is short for People Assisting the Homeless and it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose mission is ending homelessness for individuals, families and communities. In San Diego, PATH provides a variety of services for our neighbors experiencing homeless, including outreach, housing navigation, interim housing, rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. In 2008, the city of San Diego and the city council with the support of the mayor, the Housing Commission and Civic San Diego initiated a vision for a one-stop homeless services center. And in 2010, PATH was selected to be the lead agency. And tonight I'd like to introduce Brian Grueters, the Associate Director of Outreach for PATH San Diego, who's going to tell us about PATH programs and provide, to provide housing and other resources to assist our homeless residents. Brian?
Uh, thanks, Barry. So, um, I've had the fortune of, uh, being able to walk around the neighborhood somewhat, Barry. And so I think that's why I got the, the cool introduction. But I also wanted to mention that I've got two colleagues on, um, the Regional Director for PATH San Diego, uh, Hanan Scraper, person I'm lucky to call boss. And then also my, um, colleague from the Housing Commission has just been super supportive of, Ketcher Carter is the Senior Homelessness Coordinator for, uh, I'm sorry, Senior Outreach Coordinator for the San Diego Housing Commission. So she's here as well. We hadn't had much of a chance to talk through what our presentation was going to look like, but, um, Ketcher, I wanted to maybe give you first crack at doing kind of a broad overview. We work closely with the Housing Commission to, uh, Ketcher's really point person there on arranging coverage across the city for outreach services. Um, and so I wanted to make sure she has a chance to kind of talk through the, the big picture. And then we can talk a little bit more about what kind of PATH does and how we see this work. Yeah, mute, Ketcher.
It always happens to me that way. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ketcher Carter. I serve as the Senior Outreach Coordinator for San Diego Housing Commission. Um, and I just wanted to say thank you for the invitation to join you and be able to present on our Coordinated Street Outreach Program and how that is, um, is aligning into your community and providing outreach services uh, to those who are experiencing unsheltered living. Um, if I have the ability to share the screen, I don't.
Second here, I'll fix, I'll fix that.
Just gonna set you up.
Great, thank you. Excellent. Um, let's see. And can you see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, all right, let me start from the beginning. All right, um, so in this presentation, we will provide an overview of the Coordinated Street Outreach Program, summarize our outreach activities and resources in your community and share some recent outcomes. Let me make sure I've got my stuff together here. All right. The program was initially approved by the city of San Diego on October 27th, 2020. In July of this year, the contract with People Assisting the Homeless of PATH was renewed and the city council appropriated an additional $1 million to increase the number of funded outreach specialists. With the implement, implementation of this program, the city and Housing Commission adopted a strategy that focused on the quality of client engagement versus the quantity of, of client engagement.
You're not actually seeing your, um, your display. We're, we're seeing the, you know, the version of PowerPoint with, um, the next slide over on the right and the first slide over.
Oh. Okay.
Get out and come back and grab the right, right one or put yourself into presentation mode.
I think that's what I need to do. My apologies. Um, I haven't had this, um, happen before. Can you see that screen or is it just the two screens still?
Uh, don't see anything now.
All right. Well, and I
It's pretty clear like that if you want to just click through.
Okay. If that works for everyone? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So this also presented an opportunity to deploy outreach resources in a coordinated neighborhood-based approach with dedicated outreach teams in every council district. And to this end, outreach specialists provide street-based case management, which entails the ongoing engagement of individuals experiencing homelessness, assisting clients in meeting their basic needs and identifying appropriate housing solutions, both emergency and long-term. This initiative is a critical component of the city's homeless crisis response system as it serves to meet individuals where they are at and provide tailored support based in the, in the individual's specific needs and their circumstances. Outreach activities in the city of San Diego align with the community standards adopted by the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, which includes a transition to street-based case management and a housing-focused service model. The service model was developed over several months, uh, leaning on lessons learned over the last few years. Feedback from subject matter experts, including org code and international renowned homeless services consultants, the Regional Task Force on Homelessness and the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness. And a few key features of the service model include the focus on consistent proactive client engagement, implementation of a neighborhood-based strategy in an equitable fashion, maintaining low-barrier operations, facilitating connections to supportive services, emergency shelters and permanent housing, as well as assisting clients in meeting their basic needs and improve their sense of safety. The program employs two distinct yet complementary functions. First, the mobile homeless response team is assigned, uh, assigned neighborhoods to cover. They have, we prioritize engaging clients that are connected to a housing resource and supports ongoing, consistent, street-based case management, including crisis intervention, diversion counseling and system navigation. Now, the rapid response team focuses activities in areas with known concentrations of individuals experiencing homelessness, facilitates housing-focused problem-solving conversations, improving client's sense of safety and assists with meeting basic needs, triage and response to service requests we, received through the Get It Done app. And an activity is data-driven and referral-based. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, the Coordinated Street Outreach Team is comprised of all city-funded outreach activities and in some instances incorporates programs funded by the county. The administration of outreach activities is overseen by the Senior Outreach Coordinator employed by the San Diego Housing Commission, which is me. Outreach activities occur throughout the city on a daily basis, including after hours up to 10:00 PM and on the weekends. The Housing Commission makes a concerted effort to solicit community feedback, not only to provide information on outreach activities, but to use residents' concerns and recommendations to inform our deployment strategy. To monitor the implementation of the service model across all funded partners, the Housing Commission facilitates ongoing planning and case conferencing meetings to manage logistics, to review the rosters of clients that have been recently matched to a housing resource and to coordinate focused outreach events in areas experiencing elevated rates of unsheltered homelessness or active encampments. And then it's also training our outreach staff on accessing shelter opportunities through the Coordinated Shelter In-Seek Program. As the administrator of the Coordinated Outreach Portfolio, the, um, the Housing Commission collects an array of reporting metrics, which includes client prioritization and enrollment, exits to permanent and other long-term housing, exits to shelter, the length of time to obtain a positive exit, enrollment to case management conversion and resource referrals. These data points help inform program performance as well as to identify resourcing deficiencies, trends amongst clients outreach specialists for engaging and stability to the service model. Um, this slide, so currently, um, currently District 6 is currently, I'm sorry, Council District 6 is currently served by one and a half full-time outreach specialists from PATH. And, uh, a little later on, I'll let Brian kind of introduce what that looks like. Um, these individuals are responsible for the ongoing provision of street-based case management. And the rapid response team is comprised of 10 FTEs, which are full-time employees, and they provide citywide coverage. On average, 10% of their time is spent responding to service requests in Council District 6, which equates to one full-time employee. Um, so as part of the ongoing field assessments, outreach, uh, outreach teams canvass the community and maintain a record of areas with high concentrations of individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness. To date, the following locations are frequented by our outreach personnel. You mentioned earlier the Best Buy, Park and Ride, the Mira Mesa Library, as well as the Mira Mesa Community Park. And these are just examples. Um, in, in instances where the active encampments are large congregations of unsheltered individuals, the Housing Commission will coordinate a focused outreach event to facilitate a multidisciplinary cross-jurisdictional approach to engaging these individuals. These events are coordinated in conjunction with the assigned outreach team for the area, the County of San Diego and a federally qualified health center. And when appropriate, the San Diego Police Department's homeless outreach team. This slide details some of the outcomes that are related to outreach activities. And I just wanted to put that up there. Um, you like to show that there are 23 individuals that have been served. Six individuals are currently enrolled with the Mobile Homeless Response Team. There are 17 individuals currently enrolled with the Rapid Response Team. And I'm happy to say that three individuals have been exited to permanent housing in the last 90 days. And there are four more that are pending housing. Um, and before we conclude, um, I wanted to provide the following information for your future reference. Uh, I'll go back to that slide because I got it out of order. So for unsheltered requests for services, we do ask that we, um, refer them to 211. The 211 can, can do the proper referrals to provide assistance. For you as the community, again, um, as Officer Christina Santos mentioned, the Get It Done app. And then for city requests, the Coordinated Street Outreach Program, we do have, um, an in, uh, email address, san diegooutreach@sdhc.org. Um, and at this point, Brian, I'm going to invite you to jump in. Um, this is just a little bit of, of what's going on with the Coordinated Street Outreach Program and we'd be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Yeah, let me maybe just jump right to, uh, what's going on in Mira Mesa. Um, I would just say that we're, um, more and more aware. I think our relationship has kind of been forming with the community, um, over, over the last several months. Um, we started talking about presenting at one of these events. I don't know, Barry invited us a long time ago and it's, uh, really on me for not getting here earlier. But as, as we're ramping up, uh, our rapid response team, which covers the entire city, as Ketcher mentioned, we're also ramping up the, kind of the second team, this Mobile Homelessness Resolution Team, which is, which is kind of like an on-the-ground case management team. Our intention is to have somebody that's able to really work every neighborhood across the community. You know, it's, you can imagine the challenge. Um, there's lots of neighborhoods. Not all of them are really carved out in a way that makes sense. You know, you can't identify neighborhoods necessarily by census tract or by zip code. And so we're, we're working, and, and in addition to that, um, some communities have very dense populations of people living unsheltered. You know, think about just the downtown core. Uh, and then some neighborhoods have a problem, but it's not nearly as, as, as big of a problem. And so thinking through like, how do you, you put half of a person in some of those neighborhoods? You put a quarter of a person? What would that even mean? A quarter of a person? The whole intention is really that somebody spends time in a neighborhood and gets to know it, almost like a bee. Um, and we've seen that prove really, really effective in communities where we've done this work before. Um, PATH, I think, this is the way we prefer to do this type of work. We like to get to know the communities, get to know the businesses, the neighbors, you know, the law enforcement, the librarians, and just really understand what's going on in that community. And it helps us serve the folks living unsheltered. They're better as a result. Um, so that's our intention, um, in Mira Mesa. We've just, uh, little by little, we're adding folks that we're hiring around the community and really trying to stand up this program citywide. So, uh, Ketcher mentioned, we've got somebody, uh, who's, who's, uh, split between Pacific Beach and Claremont. Why those communities? Those are the first ones that really reached out to us for this type of work. Uh, it's been two years now since that happened and we've continued that going on and, and we're slowly but surely adding staff around, uh, the community, out, around the city, outside of the downtown core. So we're putting folks in City Heights and extending out to Rolando. We're moving up a little bit further north. And I'd say that we're hoping that within the next month or two, we're going to have somebody dedicated to either going to be covering Curdy Mesa and Mira Mesa or something like that. We're still trying to look at the, the areas, what the population of folks living in sheltered looks like. How many people is it? And so forth. And then, you know, come up with a, a good response. We also want to make sure that it's not too big of a geographical area because if somebody spends all day in their car driving around the community, that's less effective than covering, you know, more dense population areas. So all that is to say, uh, we hope to be doing a lot more work in your neighborhood in short order and then doing more check-ins like this to kind of let you know what, what's going on, uh, from our perspective. And then we want to know what's happening from your perspective and kind of where the needs are. So, uh, maybe that is a way of an intro. And then, um, eh, I'd also just like to kind of mention a little bit more about kind of the model that we use, but, but maybe let me answer Jeff's question. I see a hand up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I recently was shocked to find out that a woman I knew as a child is out on the streets in Miramesa and suffering from mental issues. I'm just wondering, what can you do about that? Is there anything I can do to help her get off the streets and into housing?
Yeah, so that's a great question. The two kind of, the avenues that we're sort of fleshing out right now would be two-in-one and get it done. So if you know the person, you know their name, general physical description, where they frequent and hang out and would, you know, spend their days. Two-in-one's actually a good place for that request. That tends to get a little bit more in-depth about what's going on with that person. It's a little bit easier for us to find that person usually.
Two-in-one, what is that?
Good question. So 211 San Diego. Yeah, it's literally call the number, the number's 211 on your phone. And they also have a very large, comprehensive kind of service-directed website. But it's really a number you can call, and they have housing specialists available who can sort of triage immediate needs. Is somebody living on the street? Or are they living in a home but about to be evicted? And they can kind of go through all of that. We've been partnering with them. Anybody who calls in and says, hey, I'm homeless, I need help, they're going to say, okay, tell us a little bit about your problem. And then they're going to try to think through with that person what they can do to address it. And then we get a referral from that if somebody's living outside. So that's a way to make a not anonymous report of somebody that will come to us. That report's going to go to our Rapid Response Team, who's going to locate that person or do their level best to do that as fast as possible. And then talk through what their needs are. You know, hey, what do you need? What can we do to help you? And then the other way to do it is if it's a more anonymous referral, I think you find, you see somebody on the street, but you don't feel comfortable approaching them, or maybe it doesn't seem appropriate to do that because they're, whatever, they don't look like they want to be approached. Or, you know, anything like that. You can do an anonymous referral through 211, and we will respond to that. Sorry, through Get It Done, which is an app. You can download it to your phone, or you can access it online. And then that'll send us to respond as well. We'd love to get into that a little bit more and talk a little bit about what we're doing with that. But suffice to say for the moment that that'll send us out there. And the last thing is, you know, on meetings like this, you can always kind of tell us the location, the person, physical description, name, and we can try to find that person that way, too. And then what we're going to do then, just so it's really clear, we're going to go look for them. We're going to see if they want our help. And then if they don't, then we're going to circle back and try to find them again. And then we're going to do our best to try to get them to work with us, which really means thinking through what a housing solution might look like for that person. You know, there's all kinds of different situations out there. You know, everybody's kind of in their own unique situation. Some people need income, and that's really all they need. Some people need mental health services plus housing. But the long and short of it is that everybody really is going to need some kind of a home to get off the street, and we're going to work with them on that. Yeah, maybe the easiest thing, Jeff, is for us to connect afterwards. You've got my contact information, and we'll just do it that way. Got another hand up. Sabrina.
Hi, yes, good evening. I had a question around families that are homeless. And if you work with the local schools in Miramesa, specifically when I see, you know, allegedly a parent with a young kid, and it's during school hours. I mean, the only thing the police have said is, well, you can't really prove that they're not in like virtual school or something, but if they're homeless, I kind of doubt they are. But if there's ways that we're tracking that and trying to get those kids into school, if possibly, in more of a structured setting, or if that's not your area, or?
What we're going to try to do is get that person in a home. And then from there, you know, we sort of stop there. You know, I mean, I like to say, I don't know if anybody really likes this. I tend to say like, we solve homelessness, but not necessarily poverty or other related issues. And there are other agencies and other services that exist for that type of thing, and we'll do our best to make connections. Once somebody's in housing, the goal is, you know, we also say like, it's not just housing. Housing really is the first thing that we're going to try to do, but we're also going to try to set people up for success and make sure that they've got whatever support they need. So if we ran across a family, and we have, by the way, where that's an issue, we're going to do the best we can to make sure that they've got whatever supplies they need, income required. They know, you know, if they have questions about getting their kid into school and so forth, we're going to try to deal with those or help them figure it out. I'm not an expert on that. It's not really my area of expertise, but we will do whatever we can to support folks. Great question. And the other thing is that we don't partner directly with schools in the unified system. Wanted to just make that clear, although not to say we wouldn't be open to certainly doing a conversation like this with a school system, you know, especially if they had a lot of people that they were aware of. Certainly would love to hear their perspective.
Thank you.
See a question from Joe.
Yeah, I sort of have a comment. I don't want you to take this the wrong way. But I was born and raised in Ocean Beach. And so when I was a kid, we had people that would get downtown on their soapboxes and do stuff. And there was a lot of drugs involved and stuff. And we had facilities to put them in to take care of them. Now, the political climate has changed tremendously. Our last mayor spent millions of dollars trying to address this homeless problem. Our current mayor is spending more money on this. And my question is, when will we reevaluate the program that you guys are doing right now? If this winds up with more people being homeless, like in next July, than right now, does that mean you guys are failing, or are you going to go positive? How do we reevaluate what you guys are doing so that we know whether this is working or not?
Great question. We like to think of ourselves as a data-driven program. And I'd love to let Hanon Scraper, the Regional Director, talk a little bit more about Path as a whole. But you have to use data to make sure you're not getting, or to make sure you're getting your money's worth 100%. One reason I'm glad that Ketch is our partner on this is that they, I mean, you should see the data. They make me submit and review every month. We sort of curse them behind their back, but the honest-to-God truth is that we wouldn't have a leg to stand on without that. So with that data, I can tell you how many people I got into housing. And that's a data point we're very proud of. And so we measure that against other outreach programs and say, okay, you talk to people all day. How many people do you get off the street? And that's really important if you, so that's for outreach teams. But any program that you're spending money on that tries to solve homelessness, you know, our past mission is to end homelessness. If we can't show that we're doing that with data, you should stop paying us.
I don't think you're ever going to stop homelessness. But the problem is, we have a huge amount of people in Miramesa that are without houses right now, however you want to put that. And a lot of them are visiting our parks. We have people that have lived here for years. They're afraid to go into our parks right now because these individuals are there. And, you know, they don't look like they're had a shower, been cleaned, whatever. And, you know, when you're paying taxes and you want to use the community resources here, and you're afraid to do that, that is not a good thing. So we really want you guys to be successful. We really want you guys to get this stuff done. But what happens if it doesn't work this way? Can we reevaluate this like in July or next September or somewhere? So that we know whether this is working, or we even want to go change direction?
I think it's a good idea. Let me just, one other thing real quick, and then I'd love to let my colleagues have a chance to weigh in. That you have to evaluate the system. So outreach is a small part of a system. Not to get too in the weeds, but you have to have people, think about it like an emergency. It's like a healthcare system, right? You have, we're like the emergency response part of the healthcare system. You need somebody who goes out and finds people who are in trouble and helps them get inside whatever service treatment is available. So you've also got housing solutions. Those are sort of like your hospital, maybe, for lack of a better, this isn't a great metaphor. But basically, you need like the front end, people who are contacting people on the street. You need the middle, where people are, you know, served, right? You figure out what they need, you help them get it. And then there's the end, which is the housing. So for someone who's got a mental health issue and it's acute, that person's going to probably be in a housing situation with a lot of support for a while at least. And that housing situation, to be clear, it's not an institution. It's just a leased apartment, but with social workers that come over there to support that person. So that's the system that's in place now, and it's a good system. It's not one that San Diego just pulled out of a hat. It's kind of a national standard. But you have to measure that system. And what I would say is that homelessness doesn't end in the sense that people stop becoming homeless. There's always going to be people becoming homeless for a lot of reasons. But if you have a system that can make that a short and brief and non-recurring instance of homelessness for everybody that it happens to, you're doing okay. That's what we're heading towards, right? If we can show that, for example, there's a movement right now that's at work in San Diego to end veteran homelessness, which would make it so that veterans aren't homeless for long periods of time. If they fall into homelessness, they get out of it quickly. And if you're able to show that, then you're doing great, actually. Only a handful of communities, really, you know, 70 or so across the country have managed to do that. San Diego is not one of them yet. But if we can do that, I do think we'll have something to be proud of. I don't think you're ever going to stop seeing people becoming homeless in San Diego. There's a lot of reasons for that, but.
One of my concerns is there's talk now where we're going to set up clinics where people that are using drugs can go shoot up drugs safely so that there's no more, you know, these overdose deaths and stuff. That is the wrong way to deal with a drug-related problem. You don't allow people to continue to do that. You have to get them off of that stuff. I mean, that destroys lives day after day after day. And whoever came up with this idea to have clinics where you can go shoot up, they have to be insane to do that to these people. That's the wrong way to help somebody.
Yeah, I probably don't know enough about these clinics that you're mentioning to comment on it, but it's something I'd love to connect with you later on about it. Maybe have a further discussion about it, let me know more about it.
Yeah, I don't want to take any more time.
I'm sorry. I was just going to comment on Brian's input in terms of the system and if it's working. I think that's true. We're, you know, we may not end homelessness, but we want to make sure we have a system in place that's able to actually help people resolve their homelessness quickly. And you're right, we should be reevaluating our process, our programs often to see what's working and what's not working. Homelessness is really complex, and we are dealing with human beings, and it's not super black and white. So we need to be able to pivot and change with the needs of the community and what we're seeing on the streets. We do have a lot of folks who have chemical dependency needs and some mental health needs. And so having to, you know, multidisciplinary teams who are out and engage them and be able to really offer those services and having that system in place where we can really, when they are ready to say, yes, I want to accept help, we want to be able to take them up on it and really offer those services, not just Band-Aid the issue, right, but really create long-term sustainable solutions. And this evaluating our programs and seeing how we're doing, looking at our numbers and our data and our community, and hearing from you guys in meetings like this is really what's going to help us move forward together. And it's not an easy fix either.
Yeah, and I'd like to just add as well, like Brian and Hanon said, this is a very complex issue. But one thing that we do have to make sure that we're also paying attention to is our inventory. As we are, you know, we're looking to find housing solutions for those of our neighbors and residents that are unsheltered. The flow of coming into homelessness is faster than we can actually house individuals into housing. And so it's kind of both sides of the coin of who we're helping to gain stable housing, but also who is entering homelessness on the other side. And really affordable housing solutions and that nature are definitely important as decisions are being made in the future.
I see another hand up. Not that I'm the moderator here, but I will take a hand up if I can get it.
Hey, Brian, it's Tommy Howe. I just wanted to, A, say that you guys are doing a really good and a very, very difficult job. And I suppose you could say you guys are really doing God's work as far as some of our most disadvantaged neighbors here in San Diego. But I was wondering, and I apologize because I dialed in a little bit late to the conversation, but I was wondering if you could maybe talk a little bit about how permanent supportive housing in its best iteration is a helpful means to really remove law enforcement from being a component in how we manage our unsheltered neighbors.
Good question. Yeah, so when we talk about a homeless system, permanent supportive housing. Well, first of all, Tommy, it's great to see you, by the way. Thanks for calling in. Thanks for the question. So permanent supportive housing basically just means it's an apartment. It's a permanent home. And that's not to say that you never can leave. It's just to say that it's not, it makes it different from temporary. Temporary home would be like a shelter. So it's a place that you have a lease, and you just, you know, you just live at this place like anybody else who's running an apartment in San Diego. And so permanent supportive housing means it's a leased unit, and then it has built-in support network, which typically includes a social worker. It typically includes, you know, maybe med monitoring for people who need that. Typically, to get into a place like this, you have a documented disability. So, you know, could be chronic health conditions, COPD, or, you know, whatever, things like that. And so permanent supportive housing is really like the most intensive homelessness intervention for folks who are living outside on the street. They get into this permanent supportive housing, and what we know, this has been around for a long time, and what we know from data from decades now, is that it's really the gold standard. People get into permanent supportive housing and they don't leave. 92% of them make it for years in this housing, which is better than really any other type of housing intervention. So this is for the most complex folks coming out of homelessness. So you need that. That's a really kind of integral part of the system. In addition to, like Ketch was saying, more units in general. You just need more affordable units. I talked to a guy on the phone today who doesn't need permanent supportive housing. He's got health issues. He's living in his car. He's got a lot of health issues. Really can't work. He kind of described it to me. I mean, he's sort of like a grandfather, but he doesn't know what to do. His SSI, when it starts to come, is going to be, you know, in a neighborhood of $1,000. Where's he going to get a place in San Diego for $1,000? He's going to need to. So I basically was like, you got to find a roommate, or you got to go live in like a SRO motel downtown. Those are sort of your options. You know, that's not something you ever want to have to tell anybody. But what we would love to be able to say is, hey, there's lots of affordable housing, too. Just get on the short waitlist, and you'll get some affordable housing because you did everything right in life. You just, you know, you live in an expensive place and you don't have a high income. So, Tommy, to your question, we need a lot of affordable housing. We need a lot of permanent supportive housing. In terms of law enforcement, I mean, I think the idea is just, people get inside, they're not homeless anymore. And then they're not, you know, they're just, they're just folks. And so we work closely with law enforcement in the city of San Diego and other communities where Path works. I like to think we have a really strong relationship with the folks in the city of San Diego. And, you know, I think, but the more work we can take off their plate with respect to homelessness, the better. You know, I hope we can do more of that, and then they can spend more time fighting crime.
I have a quick question. Is the supportive housing the same thing as the Section 8 stuff we used to have years ago? I have a quick question. Um, is the supportive housing the same thing as the section eight stuff we used to have years ago?
Uh, it's not. Um, so section eight is affordable housing. It's, it's subsidized housing. Um, but it doesn't typically come with any kind of support. So section eight is, and it's still around. It's just, um. Tends to be hard to get. There's long, long waitlists for it, like a ten-year waitlist for it. Um, so it's really just subsidized housing for people who don't have enough income to pay rent. Um, but it doesn't come with the types of supports that a supportive housing, uh, setup would.
Do, do we have any supportive housing in this community?
We do. Um, trying to remember. So D six, I will say that, um. The current, uh, council member there has been, uh, you know, I, I think brought in some supportive housing. Um, in my neighborhood in Claremont, there's a senior housing property coming in that Path's gonna be working on. Really excited. I see it every day when I bring my kids to daycare. Uh, I'm very excited that it's about to open and it's a beautiful building. Um, it's called Ivy Seniors. Uh, housing and, um. They have fifty-two units, relatively small, and it's gonna be all seniors who were, you know, coming out of homelessness. We're gonna go live there and it's gonna be great. We have clients who are gonna be able to live there. So I, I couldn't be happier about that. And then they're gonna build another similar, but it's, I think primarily just, uh, affordable. Um, it's gonna be across the street from that in the same area in the Claremont Town Square. And that one's gonna be. Maybe a few units of supportive, but primarily for like moms and kids and veterans. So, you know. Um, there's stuff going on in D six. I'm not aware about Mira Mesa. Uh, maybe somebody else on the call has more information about it.
We do not, to my knowledge, would have been able to find out, have any supportive housing. We do have, um, a couple of buildings. I'm not sure how many units. I think it's in the realm of three to four hundred that are Housing Commission properties, but supportive, we do not. I, I think we're gonna end it here. We could talk for another hour. There's so much on this topic. So I'm gonna invite you all to come back. After the first of the year, once we have a chance to do some more work. I know there are a number of us. And a number of departments that are looking into what we can do in the Mira Mesa area. Um, I really have to thank Brian, you, you're the first one who came out, you and we had, uh. Louise from the D six office and we had Michaela from the mayor's office. And we all, uh. We did a tour of a couple of the areas here where we have concrete populations of homeless. One of which was the pedestrian bridge. We crawled around behind one of the malls that had been reporting incidents. And I wanna thank you for that and for your involvement and for keeping us updated on what's going on. I also wanna thank Ketra and Hanan for being here tonight. We're really looking forward to seeing you all more and getting more involved in. Your projects and programs and helping to, maybe as you said, we have programs to end veterans homelessness. Maybe we can make Mira Mesa kind of ground zero for ending homelessness in general. And we'd love to have you as part of that.
We would love to talk more about it. And, and may I just say real quick, it, it was really great to meet you, Barry. And one of the reasons I was excited to come speak to this group is that, um, you know, we, we don't always. Find that folks in communities are interested in the work we're doing and how we're doing it. Uh, we use the term. That, that we say person-centered or client-centered in this work, which just means. You know, trying to meet people where they're at, helping them solve problems and sort of taking a non-judgmental approach about what they're going through. Kind of like a, um, there but for the grace of God, go I kind of approach. And just have to say it was, it was really nice to. You know, meet you and have some discussions about that.
All right, we will, we will invite you all back, Hanan and Ketra. Thank you so much for joining Brian here tonight. I think the community's gonna have a lot more interest in what's going on and we'll have you back in a few months for an update.
It'd be great. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Bye-bye. All right, I'm checking. I don't see the county supervisor has arrived as yet. We do have one other item on the agenda before that. Uh, board elections. We sent out a notice and we sent out, um, the ballot. To our members of record as of September. And we got those, I'm sorry, as of October. And we got those back. Everything sent in by five PM today was tallied. Copy of all that was sent to our reporting secretary, Jeff Stevens. And we'll just run through this really quickly. Um, we had several offices up for election. These are two-year terms. President Barry Vaz, second vice president for membership, Yvonne Negron. Courting Secretary Jeff Stevens, parliamentarian Eric Colbeck. Director-at-large, number three, Lisa Balderson. Those are the confirmed results of the ballot. We have one appointment that has been made. The term of newsletter editor, the previous newsletter editor had to step away. They've moved out of the area. Uh, we'd like to announce that Konchen Farquia has offered to step up from at-large to become our newsletter editor. And this is a real expansion upon the duties of newsletter editor. Konchen has been working our Instagram and our Facebook, or expanding our social media. So we're going to need an editor to work the physical newsletter. And Konchen has brought along the perfect editor. Javier?
Yeah, I just pronounced Javier.
Javier, I apologize. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself? This is our new newsletter editor, working under the board member of newsletter editor.
Okay. I'm Javier Ferquia. I'm in tenth grade. I go to Scripps Ranch High School and I'm happy to be the newsletter editor.
We're happy to have you. You've already gotten to work on the next newsletter edition. We've been missing that with, uh. The loss of our prior newsletter editor. We welcome you and we're looking forward to seeing your work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Lisa has a question.
Okay.
Lisa, you had a question?
No, I was trying to applaud. I was trying to, um, welcome him through applause and I just saw hands. So, no, but welcome, all the same, welcome.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. And Xavier, we're, we're absolutely glad to have you here because that's something we haven't had recently. Is involvement by the youth in our community and we hope you're the first of many. We thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I got word that our county supervisor is here, so I will sign off of the election news. Just with the announcement that we do have two terms that are open for members at large, one for a one-year term. And one for a two-year term. So if you're interested in volunteering, please send a note to issues@miramesatowncouncil.org. And we will be in touch with you. So I'm gonna step aside now and I'm going to welcome our supervisor, Tara Lawson-Reemer. Who is coming to us directly from a long meeting. So we wanna get her right on and let her update you with what's going on. Supervisor?
Hi, thank you so much for having me. How are you?
We are great. So happy to see you.
I'm so happy to see you and apologize for the casual attire. It is the dinner hour in my house, so, um. And I have a two-year-old, so I have to get out of the suit or the suit will be at the dry cleaner. I think we all know how that goes. Um, so yeah, it's great to see you all and there's just a bunch of updates I wanna run through. Um, first of all, I wanna talk a little bit about the Mira Mesa epicenter. Uh, I can't see everyone. I don't know if that's my device or your device. Um, e- everyone seems to be, um, kind of fading out. Um, can you guys see me?
Um, not right now. We were seeing you till just a moment ago.
Yeah.
Now your V goes off.
Uh, let me try. Okay, let me just co- let, run through my, my first updates and let's hope it comes back on. I'll, I'll see if I can, uh, get Amanda to help me out, um, in the meanwhile. Um. I think the most important thing to, to comment on is the capital improvement dollars that we've put into expanding youth opportunities. To revitalize the Mira Mesa epicenter. Um, we are looking at reopening the eight thousand square foot space. With a three point six five million dollar investment. So I am just so incredibly excited about it. We signed a temporary agreement and staff is now doing public outreach. Uh, which is gonna continue through the process to get, uh, feedback from, from everyone in the community about the vision. For what this, uh, center should look like. And right now we have an engineer working on a condition assessment of the facility. And this, I think, should take about, we, I've been told nine to twelve months. So we're hoping to start construction by summer twenty twenty-two with project completion expected by summer twenty twenty-three. Which is incredibly soon and I'm just, uh, could not be more excited. And I have to say. Uh, we've been doing a lot, um, in, in the last year that I've been representing, uh, our community on the board. And this is absolutely one of the things I'm most excited about. There's just such a huge need. And, um, you know, it's a, it's a project that communities come together for. So I'm just really, really looking forward to, to making this happen. So, uh, that's the first thing I wanted to give a big update on. Um, I also wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, the MCRT program, which we have expanded. And, uh, really looking at scaling that up across the county. Um, so we passed a, a board resolution in, I think it was April. And now I'm just monitoring and, and kind of making sure that we don't, uh, run into roadblocks. And so far there have been some. There's been a number of challenges in terms of hiring, um, appropriate, appropriate staff. For these mobile crisis response teams. There's a huge staffing shortage, um, and, uh, for, for trained. Uh, social workers and trained nurses who do crisis response. So things are not moving as quickly as I'd like. Um, and I'm just really focused on trying to unlock some of these bottlenecks and trying to figure out, you know, what do, what can we do? Um, to, to streamline and, and staffing and, and figure out, you know, are there things we can do to sweeten the pot? So we can hire the, the right folks that our community meets. So that's definitely, uh, strong on my radar. Um, another thing I wanna, I'm just really proud of is the work we did to end the wasteful P one hundred program. I don't know if you all are aware of it, but basically we're spending a lot of money and staff time. Doing these like very onerous investigations of people who applied for basic, you know, benefit programs. Um, who were, who are in need in our community. And we're just spending millions of dollars going to investigate their homes. And like dig through their closets and, uh, see if they qualify. And I, in the end, uh, spending more money on har- harassing people. Than we saved, which is just so terrible and really, you know, criminalizing, uh, people who are, are really in the most need. Often frankly, single moms and people who are in a really bad, um, down on their luck. And so I'm just really happy. That we've managed to end that. So that feels like a huge accomplishment. Um. We've also created a North County homelessness outreach program. It's a pilot program. And so that's really exciting. Uh, we've hired eleven or in the process of hiring eleven, uh, trained social service, social, uh. Service workers, uh, to be outreach workers in North County to, to be able to go around to meet our homeless population where they're at. And help them get into the, the shelters and services they need. I think, um, our homeless population, we've all probably noticed is just really. Really, really, um, uh, uh, an issue that affects all of us. Um, you know, people who are suffering from homelessness. Are not given the services they need and our streets are full, um, too often with folks who, who shouldn't be there, who need help. Um, and i- it's not, it's not good for our public safety either. So there's gotta be a better solution. So. We're really focused on doing this outreach to get, uh, these, uh, this homeless population into the kind of services that they need. Um, to hopefully get back on their feet. So that's a big investment that I've been working on. Um, I'm also really excited about our regional sustainability plan. So. Uh, back right when I first started on the board, um, one of the first things we did was say, we need a regional approach to. Uh, get to net zero on carbon emissions because climate catastrophe is now. It's not tomorrow, it's happening. I'm sure we have all seen all these terrible, terrible pictures in the news of wildfires, like the Paradise Fire. We, I mean, I know a lot of firefighters and they are working around the clock. They never have a break. There's no such thing as fire season anymore in California. It's fire all year long because of climate change. And we're beginning to look at some of the erosion of our bluffs, um, and, uh, destruction of our coastline. That's a, a, a consequence of, um, of rising sea levels. So this is happening. And I think, you know, as a, as a mom of a two-and-a-half-year-old, you know, I often think, God, what is this world gonna be like in? Not just twenty years when she's twenty-two, but in forty years when she's forty-two, or sixty years when she's sixty-two. You know, like, what is this planet? And if we continue on this path, we are going to be a San Diego that's beset by wildfires and. Extreme heat, uh, waves and it's, um, it's getting worse. So I am just very proud to have been able to bring forward this. Um, move towards a regional, um, sustainability plan, a regional decarbonization framework. So that we could begin looking at how we as a region move towards net zero carbon emissions here in San Diego County. And you know what, frankly, I'm kind of sick of waiting for Washington to act. Um, you know, in Sacramento, it's, at the end of the day, we can't wait for other people. We gotta do it ourselves. Who knows? I mean, I, I used to work back in DC, so I can just tell you, uh, it's gridlock. It's impossible to get anything done. Um, and it's just really an honor to live in a community that shares. Uh, values about, um, protecting our environment and our future for, for future generations and just, just getting to work and getting the work done. So, um, I, I feel like I could talk about so many more things. Um, but let me, I don't wanna. Just talk at you. I really wanna have a chance for a dialogue. So hopefully you all can see me. I, you all are back on my screen. So maybe that's a good sign. Um. Go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, I was just saying we'd see you, but I, I do actually have a question for you. Um.
Yes.
The, um. I saw a presentation recently on the county supervisor redistricting that's being planned and some of those are pretty wild. And you, you might not even be our county supervisor after they're, after they're done with it. So what, first of all, do you think that's likely? And if it does happen, what happens to a project like the epicenter that we've been, uh, working with you on?
Well, first of all, I have seen the lines. I do think it's likely that it's gonna be wildly different, but nothing's locked in stone. And I strongly encourage y'all, if you. Uh, think that you should be in that coastal district, um, to, to come show up at the meeting on. I think it's November sixteenth. It's in a, it's in like a week, but we can make sure you have the information. Um. But it's true. The, the map that has the most momentum, um. Cuts Mira Mesa out of what will probably would be most likely be my, my district. So it cuts you off from, uh, the coast. Um, so if that, if you, if that's something that you all care about, you know, I, I think it's important for, for everyone to make their voice heard. You know, I don't. I don't, I'm, I don't have a view, you know, I'm not advocating for anything except to make sure that everyone who cares about the future of San Diego County. Knows how to, to participate in this process. So, uh, we can certainly share with you the information about upcoming meetings and. Um, you know, it's definitely worth getting involved because the commission is really trying to listen to citizens. I listened to some of the testimony. Oh, Amanda just put it in the chat. I've listened to some of the testimony and they're really are trying to take into account. Community voices. So, um, if you all, uh, have a view. Um, and you think that you should be part of that, uh, coastal district that is being put together. Then I would suggest, you know, coming in and testifying. Uh, that being said. I am so proud to represent Mira Mesa and fight for Mira Mesa. I was talking to my chief about, staff about this today. Just, uh. Now, you're not supposed to have favorites in a district this big, but I just always am feeling like Mira Mesa's getting the short end of the stick. And my job is to be your champion. I was dry, I was, um, in Mira Mesa just last week and. Like annoyed again at the pothole. So, um, I, I'm, I'm, uh, and I, I think like. The park needs an upgrade. Um, it's just not right. And so I am so proud to be your supervisor. And it doesn't matter whether I am, I, I have the lines or not for the future. I will continue to fight for you. And I will continue to make sure that this epicenter gets over the finish line because it is a amazing project. That's incredibly important for our community and I'm just so excited to be part of that. Um, and I will tell you, I would be very sad if I don't get to represent Mira Mesa.
Okay.
Likewise.
I see a question from Alicia.
Hi, um. Hi, um, so I'm just wondering, is the epicenter, is it gonna go back to what it was before? Like a venue and then also helping, um, like teens, like, or is it, is there gonna be any differences, like any changes?
Like, so that's, that's subject to the community process, the community input process. So I asked, what, basically what I did is I asked county staff. To do a lot of consultation with the, with community members to say, what do y'all want? with the, with community members to say, what do y'all want? And I think the starting point is that it'll be something like what it was, right? Like that's sort of the default. But that's kind of like the default if nothing else occurs, right? But if people have ideas or input or whatnot, this is the time. So, and Barry is the expert. So I should really just Barry, why don't you go ahead?
Well, the county I know is very eager to bring a lot of the youth programming that used to be there when Harmonium first took on the epicenter as their location. With Harmonium, just the overhead involved and the maintenance for the building became too much for a standalone nonprofit to handle and had to give up the lease. And there are some amazing programs provided by the county that have been a little bit homeless. They have space, but then sometimes that space becomes suddenly unavailable. And they're scrambling to see if they have a place that they can go to. This would give a more permanent home for all these youth-based programs. And there will also be an opportunity to add other community service programming and uses on top of that once that building is reopened.
Barry, you have such beautiful built-ins. I'm obviously looking at a home decor these days. I wish this was real. Behind me is two sleeping cats and my skeleton decorations. I was like, God, where does one get such built-ins?
On the internet.
Great, I'm gonna get a zoom background like yours.
There you go. Alicia, do you have any more questions? I know you were eager to talk about the epicenter.
Oh, yeah. So I was, I graduated in 2015 from Miramesa High School. And like, I remember in the beginning of the, like, when I first went to Miramesa High School, the epicenter was like a cool place to go for concerts and stuff. And then it kind of died. And then I was, yeah, I was just kind of thinking like, if it was like, it would be cool, like after high school, like if there was like a lounge or somewhere like a lounge area to go to like, hang out with your friends and study. Cause it's like, it says it's a teen center. So I don't know, I, that's just like something I was like, I just like, was like thinking about and curious about. And it would be cool, like, uh, yeah, it was just something I was like really thinking about. And I wanted to, I wanted to share it, cause yeah.
Sounds like you have some good ideas. So hey, Amanda, do you think you can hook Alicia up with the county staff to get some input onto this process?
I would, I would, I would love.
Can definitely do that, Alicia. I'll, I'll reach out to you in the chat.
Okay, cool, okay, thank you.
Excellent. And it's interesting you say that because in the earlier days, when you were probably in elementary school, there had been a cafe and tutoring and events for the teens to come and just, you know, hang out in a safe environment and have activities. And that was unfortunately, one of the first things to go, the cafe and the hangout and then the tutoring. And in the end, it ended up being office space and concerts. And then that was even too much for them to maintain.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I'm glad you stayed around.
Yeah, definitely after school, first things first, like I always think of like me and my friends, we think of like, what are we gonna eat? And then we want to go study somewhere. So that's, yeah, that's where it came from.
Absolutely. I know Amanda's reaching out to you. Does anyone else have questions? Let's see if there are any hands up. Okay. It looks like we've covered all the questions for the evening, a lot on the epicenter. I'm really thankful that you could be here tonight. I know you had a lot going on today.
Yeah, I'm just so happy to see you all. Like I said, I'm not supposed to have favorites, but I kind of do. And so, no, seriously, I, I just appreciate all your leadership and your work for our community. And you know, happy to be a partner and all that. So please let me know whatever I can do.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks all.
Okay, we've done board elections. Let me jump back now to government and community resources. We'll start with a report from the community planning group, Jess Stevens.
Okay, I have a few things to report at the last meeting. Been an update on the pure water project. Within this couple of years, a large fraction of our drinking water will come from that project, which is actually recycled, very clean former sewage. We had a, a presentation on a, a very nice industrial project on the Sisurano Parkway. Beautiful project and we approved that unanimously. And then there was a proposal for a, what would take a community plan amendment for an industrial project in Carroll Canyon, just east of the 805. That was much more controversial because it's, it's actually down in Carroll Canyon is open space in the community plan. And so according to the current community plan, it should say is open place, but the, other people want to do something different with it. So that was just an informational item, but it'll be back as an action item for an initiation of a community plan amendment at our November meeting. Also in November, our community plan update meetings will be restarting. Those are, happen immediately before the planning meetings. Planning group meeting will be Tuesday, today at seven o'clock. Same time also on Zoom. But the, the plan update meetings we have before that, when they have a lot to discuss, those will start at 5:30 and I expect this next one will also, that one will be on mobility analysis. They're proposing to add a lot of housing to the community. And we have not yet seen an analysis of how people will get around and what that will do to the roads. So that could be an important meeting. One other thing, I just got a, a notice that we'll be hearing of another small project in the market center where the, where BJ's wants to come in and build a restaurant to replace the former Mimi's. So I think, I think there'll be a lot of enthusiasm for that, that project in the, in the community. So that's my report for you tonight.
Thank you, Jeff, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the recreation group, Joe Fritto.
Yeah, I want to apologize. My wife turned on the porch light and it, and it made my computer go down. So I missed the whole thing from, from on, on, on the epicenter, but I'll find out all the details. Hopefully Wagenheim is gonna start before Christmas. Salk is gonna start next year, even though they're 18 months behind schedule. And I do not have any new information on the phase two of the community swimming pool in a skateboard park. The city is trying desperately to not take too much of our land over there for stormwater abatement, even though we've lost a million dollars in stormwater abatement in phase one, which was supposed to cover it all. So hopefully we'll have some good news by January or February. We may have some stuff going on, but right now it's just wait and see, which is not a good way to do business.
Joe, what's the date on Salk again? Are they gonna get it done in time for the next school year?
No.
No.
Obviously. Jeff. TB Pinnick, they did phase one. You know, when they did the ball fields. Part of that phase one was to put in two streetlights that would, would illuminate New Salem. Those streetlights have never worked since TB Pinnick left the site. And we are still trying to get those things fixed. I mean, I don't, God knows how many years it's been. But you know, these kind of things, that should never happen. So the, the city really is trying to be quiet about stuff because they don't want to make a mistake. The, the last news I have, in fact, I'm sending out another email tomorrow to get an update is that Wagenheim hopefully will start before the end of the year. And Salk, which isn't going to be as invasive as Wagenheim. You know, that's gonna happen and it'll get done. But Wagenheim is really important because it impacts hundreds of kids over there in their recreation stuff and their, their physical ed classes. So we're really hoping that that, that gets started. Hopefully they can finish it by the time the summer's over. So when the next school year starts, everything will be back on schedule.
All right, thank you, Joe. Miramar College, P Wesley Lundberg, are you here? Okay. Miramesa Branch Library, Ina Gibson. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and move on to elected officials. First up, San Diego Unified School District A Board Member Sabrina Bazo.
Good evening, everyone. That was a really good discussion with Tara. I was not aware that we might be out of her district. So I'm glad you said something, Jeff, because I was looking into that more. So, oh, sorry. So I guess I'll just start with the vaccine mandate, which is going to be going into effect for students and staff, students over 16, as well as San Diego Unified Staff. And that will be taking place December 20th. So ultimately, when we come back to school in January, that is when it's going to really be taking, going into effect because people, the kids will, and staff will be going out on the holidays in December. Any of the students that do not, you know, aren't, aren't going to be vaccinated and staff as well. Well, stat, I know for students that they will be going to virtual academy at that point. Also, I've been trying to get around to a lot of the schools, not only, well, Miramesa, of course, but then also University City and Claremont, which are all my areas, just to kind of, you know, meet the principals since I'm new. We have a new area superintendent since our, our old area superintendent is now our, our superintendent or interim superintendent, Lamont Jackson. And it's just been really eye-opening. The principals are trying very hard to, you know, make sure the kids are engaged. You know, everything's going smoothly, but it's, it is really difficult right now. So we're trying, you know, and being with the area superintendent, just trying to let them know, to give them a little grace right now because they're all trying to do the best they can, but it's really not business as usual. I mean, there's just a lot of strain with still testing and, you know, all the, you know, things that come with still, you know, dealing with COVID basically. And so we're, we're working through that and we are supporting our, our school and our staff. But it's, you know, definitely been, I know, strained right now. So, you know, hopefully in the, it's starting after, in January, we'll be able to have a little bit more normalcy. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we are also having a redistricting for the school district. Now, from what I'm told, I can't speak, you know, officially on this, but I'm told that it's not going to be, make that much of a difference in terms of lines. So hopefully that's good, that, that's a relief to everyone with all the other lines that seem to be changing. And I have identified, we each appointed a representative and mine was Hein Eid. I hope I'm saying her name right. She is a mom and she's Vietnamese. She worked for a nonprofit that supports disadvantaged youth in our county. And she also is a mom of two students at Jonas Salk. So I think she will be a great represent, representative for us on this committee. And then finally, we are still accepting the applications at this point for the superintendent job and are going to be starting to look into interviews for that in November and December and hopefully have someone in place in January. So I will stop there.
Sabrina, I have a question. Is Lamont Jackson in the running for the new superintendent?
Absolutely.
Well, we gotta do whatever we can to make that. He's a homegrown Miramesa guy, we gotta get him in there.
Yes, he is. Oh, oh, speaking of Miramesa, I'm sorry for anyone on the call that's from Scripps Ranch, but I do have to say, I was at the Scripps, I was at Scripps Ranch, not this past Friday, Friday before, for the Miramesa Scripps game. And if anyone was there, it was, and I am not a football person, so just to tell you that. But it was probably one of the most exciting games I've been to in a long time. And it was senior night for Scripps Ranch and, you know, the teams were going back and forth. But in the end, with two seconds left in the game, our freshman kicker from Miramesa kicked a field goal, 30 yard field goal, and we won the game. And it was very exciting. So I wanted to end on a good note. So thank you, Joe, for.
Well, we really look at Scripps Ranch as being Miramesa East. So that's, that's just part of our community that are just.
That's right.
They just have too much money.
Yeah, and it's that we actually have a trophy. It's the Battle of the 15, they call it. And so they have a trophy that, so now we are holding the trophy until next year.
Our, our football coach in Miramesa was told he only has one thing to do, that's beat Scripps Ranch every year. He can lose all the rest of the games.
Yep.
We don't care.
Yeah. So, thank you guys.
Thank you, Sabrina. Next up, San Diego Community College District Board, Bernie Rennerson. I don't think he's here tonight. City Councilmember Chris Kate's office, Sheldon Zeman.
Hi, everyone. Hope everyone had enough candy for Halloween and had a great Halloween. Just a few items right now regarding service reports, get it done. There's an existing V-COM sign along Park Village Road between Mannix Road and our, our Conaway that covers the eastbound direction of travel. It's hard to see. Someone constituent sent in that it's hard to see because of tree branches. So I submitted that to the Get It Done app. Resubmitted a Get It Done report on Consolidated Way. They, they picked up all the cumbersome couches, et cetera. But left the weeds and trash. So now I put back in to get the weeds and the trash picked up back on, on Consolidated Way. Another Get It Done report was illegal dumping of a couch at New Salem Street and Camino Ruiz. That item has been removed. Over on Flanders Avenue between 7950 and 7974, there was some lifting of sidewalks. I went out today, took pictures of those. I did submit it to Get It Done and I also sent it to city staff for review. A water bill from a constituent had doubled. I sent his water bill pics along with information from the constituent to the city staff. They will go out and read the water meter as part of the procedure this week. There's a stop sign. Our constituent wanted a stop sign at a comma place and a comma street. Staff said the intersection met the criteria for the stop sign. If they don't receive any negative comments within 30 days, they will proceed with a new work order for the installation of a stop sign along comma place facing northbound traffic. It could take up to 90 days to install. All things Ube Desserts City application. They were waiting, been a month or two since they sent in the, the storefront permits, they want to redo the storefront. I helped them along with that last Thursday, last Thursday, they finally got the permit. And we'll be in a scheduling inspection soon and they thank the office for their help. One more item from the San Diego Foundation. The San Diego Foundation 2223 Common Scholarship Application will open Wednesday, December 1st. If you want to know more about this application process, you can go to sandiegofoundation.org. And that's it for now. Any, any questions? I did have somebody just email me regarding their water bill being doubled. So I told them of the procedure to get ahold of me, send me pics and explain it to me. So that's all I have for tonight. I'm trying to keep it short and, and that's all. Any questions?
Sheldon, I just want to thank you for doing a good job.
I appreciate that. Thank you for thanking me. I just do my job. That's all I do.
I love doing one. So Sheldon, can you check and see if there's anything happening with the to get the missing link of Carol Canyon Road built?
Yeah, Carol Canyon Road, the extension.
Yep.
Yep, I'll check in on the extension on Carol Canyon Road.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sheldon.
You're welcome.
Next up from the Office of Assemblyman Brian Mainshine is Rob Newton here. Do not see him.
I want to, I want to give some information. Brian Mainshine got a hundred thousand dollars for our RSVP unit in Miramasa. So huge amount. I don't, we don't know quite how to spend it yet, but there may be a big party going on here pretty soon.
All right. San Diego Mayor Todd Gloria's office, Michaela Vock.
Good evening, everybody. Happy November. Barry, would you be okay if I quickly shared how to do the Get It Done report for homeless encampments?
Excellent, yes.
Awesome. Let's see if I can share the screen. Perfect. So I just want to kind of drive it home since we're talking about homelessness today. You got to hear from Path. Captain Holden was here to discuss kind of MPD's work. And so I just want to show how your Get It Done report then helps the providers and PD go to these locations. So if you don't have the app on your cell phone, you can do it via the web. So you just Google San Diego Get It Done. Homeless outreach and encampment is a selection, so you'll just click it. Here you'll open it. One example, so I'll do the Best Buy at Mission, Miramasa. So here you go. You put the location of where the encampment is. The next question is going to be is, are there people present? And the reason why this is important is if they're just left their belongings and there is no person present, that Get It Done request will be routed to the Environmental Services Department so that the encampment can be abated. There's about like a twenty-four hour notice. They have twenty-four hours to pick up their belongings. It could range from three to twenty-four, but to pick up their belongings. If they don't, the Environmental Services Department will come, pick it up and then clean the site if it's on the public right of way. If it's not on the public right of way, and let's say it's on Best Buy's private property, the property owner will get notified to do the abatement. There's some work there, but if there is someone present, so then you would click how many people are there, animals such as how long have they been there? And then people present will then trigger for the homeless providers to come. So Path. So outreach worker would come to try to provide services. If they decline and stay and they're still there, the next day, the homeless outreach team will come. Every time a homeless outreach team approaches a homeless individual, they ask if a bed is available and you're eligible for a shelter. If they say yes, they'll immediately take them to shelter that's available. If they say no, it goes into a progressive enforcement model, and so every contact is logged, encouraging them. So first is education. Second is an administrative citation. Or I'm sorry. It's, it's like a second warning. Third is a misdemeanor and then fourth is an administrative citation. So then there's buildup to kind of encourage the homeless individuals to seek that shelter. So I know that a lot of town council members and Miramasa residents like to go to Berry to kind of just tell them about a new encampment site, but it's important that each individual logs the Get It Done request. So the city is aware of how many people are noticing the encampments, how many encampments are present each day. That way, we collect the data for various reasons. So that's kind of an overview. So you just kind of go through these questions. You can upload an image kind of like Brian was saying, if you know the individual's name, if you know what they look like, that's also helpful so that the outreach worker can approach the person that you're reporting. So along the same lines, the reason why the data is important, you may have heard that um, we are, we do have a shigalosis outbreak, which is like a virus. Homeless individual can, has been contracting. We've had about twenty-six in the county. When you contract it, you immediately have to go to the bathroom. And so the city and the county are working together to deploy restrooms in sites that are very heavy with encampments to make sure that the homeless individuals have access to clean restrooms. And so you'll see that within the next week or two, restrooms will be deployed. We just want to make sure that we're preventing. You may have remembered a couple of years, years ago, the hepatitis A outbreak. So we're working on being proactive on this so it doesn't escalate further. As Captain Holden mentioned, the city, for the first time ever, is partnering with Caltrans on encampment abatements and providing services. So we asked all the council offices to submit those frequent sites so that we could deploy the outreach workers. We have a new provider that we'll be working with. And they'll specifically be working with Caltrans when they do the abatement to go along with services, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure they get shelter. I think the last thing I just wanted to touch on. It escapes me, but I know I talked a lot. I know Joe had mentioned accountability with homeless providers. That, that is important to us. We have our performance and analytics team ensuring that outreach workers are approaching homeless individuals, trying to get them sheltered. The mayor's working on homelessness every day. It's important. I am really glad that we've been able to see results in Miramasa and the work's not over yet. We'll keep working. And that'll be it for my report, and I'll post a link to the newsroom in case you want to know what else the mayor's working on. But thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Michaela. Any questions? Okay, before we go on to the next speaker, I just want to mention their next segment will be open forum. If you want two minutes, go ahead and let me know in the chat. All right, next up, County Supervisor Tara Lassnerima. Amanda, do you have anything that was not covered that you'd like to speak on?
I, I think we've taken a lot of your time. I will say that I put a link in the chat earlier to our newsletter, and I would encourage everybody to sign up for that to get regular updates. And I'm here and happy to answer questions if there's anything that's, that's come up for folks since hearing directly from Tara. Awesome. Thanks for having us. Appreciate it, and I'll see you next month.
Thank you. All right, um, from the Office of the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Nathan Fletcher, is Erin Burgess here? Okay. State Senator Tony Atkins, Diana Lara.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I hope you all had a happy and safe Halloween. It was quieter than usual in my neighborhood. But I know a lot of folks were experiencing that as well. So we are on legislative session break, and the senator is in San Diego. We have been going all around her district at various events and town halls, so please let us know if you would like her to come speak or there's an event that you would like. We do just ask that there's about two weeks in advance beforehand, because we do have lots of requests for her to come speak at things. We were most recently in Rancho Bernardo, where she was presenting a two-point-five million dollar check that she allocated in the state budget this year regarding the Witch Creek Fire. And that money will be going to repairing the streets in Rancho Bernardo, which very, very much needed. We are also still working around the clock with EDD. Even though ED has ended, there's still folks who have issues with their claim that never were resolved, so that work has not stopped. If you are still entitled to funds or there was an issue in your claim in twenty twenty or this year, please reach out to our office. We'll be happy to assist. And this Friday, we will be at Veteran Villages of San Diego assisting with their donation drive from seven AM to two PM. Barry, I will email you the flyer if you would like to distribute it. And that is all the time I'll take. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I look forward to getting the flyer. We'll get that out there for you. Thanks, Dan. Office of Congressman Scott Peters, Anthony Nguyen.
Everyone, I hope you're all doing well. So last month, we, the congressman hosted a virtual town hall. Hopefully you were able to make it. If not, I will be sending in the link through the chat, a YouTube link of that town hall in case you missed it. But basically, he talked a lot about updates to the bipartisan infrastructure framework, as well as the Build Back Better Act, or also known as the Reconciliation Bill, and also talked a little about, about, you know, his thoughts on HR three, which is a lower cost drug pricing bill that's been in the media a lot. And so that will have, or that link will have more information in terms of his thoughts on that. As of today, though, as you may or may not know, it's another week of trying to get both the bipartisan infrastructure framework and the reconciliation bills to pass. The White House last week did release a framework for what the reconciliation bill will look like. As you may remember, it was at three-point-five trillion. It's been now reduced to one-seven-five, including a lot of things on there. Investments in climate to reduce emissions, making preschool universal for three and four years olds, as well as to construct affordable housing. So there is, and since we're talking about housing and homelessness, the component of that does include one one-hundred-and-fifty billion for affordable housing creation, as well as financial assistance. But of course, it's right now, it's all a discussion and they're still negotiating. And so the, the people has asked where the congressman stands on this. For him, he definitely wants to see what the final language and what the different components are before offering his support or not support for it. But looking at what things are like, are like right now, he's definitely very encouraged by the different investment made thus far. So stay tuned for further updates on that. And then the other issue that you may heard in the news or local news here about our county having a lot of unused COVID nineteen vaccines that are soon to be expired, and we were hoping to donate that to folks in Baja California or in Tijuana, Mexico. And there was just some issues about doing so. And so the Congressman Peters sent a letter to the Secretary of Health and Human Services last week, co-signed by Representative Juan Vargas as well, just sort of asking about, you know, sort of the barriers in order for us here in San Diego County to be able to share that and what's the process if we were, wanted to donate these COVID vaccines to folks that actually want them rather than to toss them away. So there's definitely a high ratio of of wasted COVID vaccine in our county. And so now we're just, instead of wasting them, can we just donate them to people that actually want them? So we're waiting on a response from the department on that. That's pretty much all I have. I will include the link to the town hall as promised, as well as my contact information. But let me know if you have any questions or concern. Thank you.
I have one question for you, for you, Anthony. Is Congress ever going to pass these bills? It just keeps dragging on.
I know, yeah, and I feel. Yeah, no, I understand the frustration. I know I've been talking about these bills for months now. And a lot of it is really negotiating, coming to some sort of agreement that seems to be in the, the trouble with members. You know, everything from delaying the, the debt ceiling, for example, or funding the federal government for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. I mean, that's all been pushed to December third. So, you know, hopefully they can tackle these two bills this month to give them time next month to talk about the other remaining thing before the year end. So we'll just have to remain hopeful and hopefully they will get to the bottom of it. But since, since last month, I definitely see that there's been more progress on things. Hopefully, there, we're getting closer to a deal. So we'll just have to stay tuned.
Any other questions for Anthony? Okay. Thank you, Anthony. We have one person who signed up for our open forum segment. Anybody else that we haven't gotten?
I think Tom Dear wants to say something.
Okay, well, first we have first we have Tommy Howe, and then Tom, we'll let you jump in after that. Tommy?
Two Toms, that can't be a bad thing. Tommy Howe, running for San Diego City Council in District Six, currently serving as a county planning commissioner. I know most of you, and I think most of you know me, and I'm looking forward to having these meetings in person again. I've been canvassing for the last four months now that it's the first of November with my team and I. I know we've stopped by some of your homes and, you know, really what we're hearing is a lot of what we heard when I was the endorsed Democratic candidate for the District Six seat back in two thousand and eighteen, and it was really a matter of infrastructure. And back in two thousand and eighteen, we put a lot of emphasis on Parkdale and Gold Coast. Still are, obviously. I'm glad that we have some money at last set aside for those projects. I'm glad that they're eventually getting through some of the, the infrastructure at, at City Hall as, as, as time consuming as that can be. But once those get done, we have so many other roads that need attention here in Miramasa that simply have got to be rebuilt. I've got an email blast going out just about Royal Am, not to go pick on a particular street, but that road's been in terrible shape. I was going down Port Royale the other day, and that road is still in terrible shape. Covina, so many of these streets throughout Miramasa that may not have the weight of traffic that Parkdale and Gold Coast do, that may not have the schools on them, they may not have the MTS routes. But nevertheless, these are important routes for our neighbors. And after twenty, thirty years, this cycle of deferred maintenance, it's got to stop. We really need robust leadership to make that happen at City Hall. The other thing that I just wanted to mention real quickly is obviously we have a great deal of development going into Carol Canyon. We're looking at several thousand new units going online in the next several years. No one downtown can really tell me where they think all the cars are going to wind up going. I know we're going to wind up getting Carol Canyon Road built in three different parts by three different contractors, I suppose, because that's a government job. But that's a real concern for Miramasa, and I want to make sure that at least we're getting these roads ironed out along with so effective transit into the community so people have a reason to get out of their car and take the bus and maybe going to, to work at Surrender Valley, maybe going to work at, at MCAS Miramar. But we have to have bus routes that are more effective than cycling people over to UTC or up north as far as adding that, and we, we welcome more neighbors and more densification into our community. The last thing I wanted to mention, and I reached out to Sheldon about this, and I appreciate his attention about this. So here's my water bill. As you can see, the very long line is for October two thousand and twenty-two. I really don't know what kind of leak I must have at my house to have a, a water bill like that, but I can, I can tell you, I live over at the Mesa Village HOA, and we use a lot of water on the grass over here, but I tell you, we do not have a leak like that. So I have never seen a water bill like this before in my life. I had a number of my, my neighbors mention this while canvassing. I had one guy in Heveridge say that he had a similar instance with his water bill. And he says, I know they didn't touch it because it's still under six inches of landscaping. These are the kind of concerns that our council member needs to be looking at with an open seat coming up in two thousand and twenty-two. We have an opportunity to get a real community advocate, someone who's lived in the neighborhood for the last eight years, and lived in San Diego for nearly twenty years, to really move things forward at City Hall. I certainly hope to earn your support, and I look forward to speaking with you all more about this. My name is Tommy Howe. I say neighborhoods first because that's what I want for Miramasa, our District Six neighborhoods here in the heart of San Diego, TommyHowe.com. Thanks as always for the time, Barry. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tommy. And on to Tom Dear.
Hey, Tommy, you should check with your meter reader. Maybe he's just too lazy to read it correctly. Shale, thank. You got to learn how to spell your last name. You got it spelled incorrectly under your title there. But anyway, I am referring to the Miramasa Maintenance at this district. We just had our budget meeting and we approved what we had. Now it's up to the board to determine whether we are correct, and we're going to continue with the budget that we have laid out. It will be presented on the website. I hope Barry has set that up, or Joe has, or Jeff, I mean. And that will be out for everybody to peruse and look over. And if you have any questions, you can always contact me. Don't. But anyway, that'll be up for discussion on the next month's Miramasa Town Council meeting.
So you, you haven't sent me the budget yet, have you?
I have, I have the budget to send you. I was at today's meeting and Tom has given it to me.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Hey, you're welcome, Joe.
All right, um, Town Council Committee Report, uh, Trezor Support, Jonathan?
Uh, hello, uh, not much has changed since last month. Um, we still spent about fifty-six hundred dollars through the year, about three thousand of it just on scholarships, rest on admin. So we're down to fifty-eight thousand this year.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Jonathan. I know we haven't had a lot of our activities, unfortunately. Uh, Banner District, I don't see Jennifer Qualvik. And for membership, Lisa had to step away. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Lots going on, lots more coming up. Our next meeting is December the sixth. That's our traditional holiday meeting. We have to figure out what we're doing. Um, whether we'll be virtual, whether we'll be allowed to meet in person, we'll know shortly. And uh, we will update you as soon as we know. Thank you so much. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Barry, thank you for all you do. And, and we need to, we need to meet in person because the Mir Mesa, uh, from the high school, they come over and sing all the holiday songs. And we have all those really neat cookies that Jeff buys.
We're going to find out if those are possibilities. You know, we're going to consult with the school, with the library, and we will know soon. We'll make the announcement with enough time. Maybe we can all bake cookies if we're stuck on Zoom for one more month. Give it a try. Good night, everyone. Good night.
Take care, everyone.